I would like to call the March 13th, 2025 council meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Yes ma'am. Mrs. Walden?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum present and can continue with the meeting. Can you hear me tonight, Mr. Billy? Thank you. All right. Please stand if you will with me and join me in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Eternal and gracious Lord, we thank you on tonight for your wisdom, for your guidance, and for your presence. We thank you for touching each and every person on this dais. Put us on one accord right now. Allow us to have the minds to make sure we're conducting the business of this city in a fashionably and orderly manner. Lord, let us put ourselves last and our constituents first. Let us make sure that we do what is right and what is pleasing in your eyesight. We thank you for each person represented here. We thank you for each constituent or resident that came out tonight to share in in the business of this city. I thank you for the counselors and the city managers and the entire staff that makes up this organization of the city of Millersville. So as we pray tonight, we pray for order first and foremost on the local level, the state level, and the federal level. And we ask you to continue to lead and guide us as we lead in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone here for public comments tonight?
No ma'am.
No. You said no, Mrs.?
No ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you. So we all have received a copy of the April 8th, 2025 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or amendments that need to be made? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the April 8th, 2025 council meeting minutes?
So move. Second.
Right, there's been a motion and second, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
All right. The motion carries and the minutes are approved. Uh, let me go back, I think I meant something here.
Presentations.
Yep.
Actually, they're out of order in your information meter.
That's okay, we can make that happen. So, do we have presentations tonight for National Nurses Week proclamation and Junior Board of Directors program? Do we have that here tonight?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good, yeah, let me go around to the front.
To the podium. Yes ma'am.
So we have a proclamation from the office of the mayor and it reads, "Whereas registered nurses in the United States constitute our nation's largest healthcare profession, and whereas the depth and breadth of the nursing profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings, and whereas professional nursing is an indispensable component of the safety and quality of care of hospitalized patients and those receiving outpatient care, and whereas nurses at Atrium Health Navisant face unpredicted challenges and go above and beyond to provide high-quality patient care daily, and whereas the demand for nursing services is growing because of the aging of the American population, continuing expansion of life-sustaining technologies, and the explosive growth of home healthcare services, and whereas it is proper and fitting to highlight our nurses' dedication and efforts to improve our healthcare system as they nurture, lead, and inspire every day. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Parm Copeland, as mayor of the city of Millersville, do hereby proclaim the week of May 6th through the 12th, 2025, as Nursing National Nurses Week in the city of Millersville, and encourage all residents to celebrate nurses' accomplishments and efforts, not just this week, but in every opportunity. In witness wherefore, I have set my hand and affixed this seal to be, excuse me, and cause this seal to be affixed this 6th day of May, 2025, and it is signed by me, Mayor Mary Parm Copeland."
Thank you for the work you're doing. Thank you so much, Mayor, and everybody represented here, and thank you for coming. I am the new CNO for Atrium Navisant Baldwin and am so proud to be here in Millersville with you, and I'm looking forward to becoming a resident here. Currently in making, but actively looking for a home here. Please take the time to think about, pray for all of our healthcare workers in addition to nurses. As she said, it's highly unpredictable, but we're there every day, 24 hours a day, to care for you and your loved ones. So thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it, and y'all have a good day. (applause)
But if they'll stay up here and shake their hand, that would be great. I'm sure they would appreciate it.
(laughter) Yeah. All right, so tonight, I'm excited to introduce our third class of the Junior Board of Directors for the Millersville Main Street Downtown Development Authority. And before I get totally started, we do have one of our board members here, Jim Fane, so I want to thank you, Jim, for being here. And yes, our other board members were unable to come, but thank you, Jim. So the purpose of forming this was to reach just a young population of future community leaders and engage them in local fundraising experiences, and then also get them some real-world volunteer experience in our community, because some of them wouldn't have that otherwise. So as usual, this time of year is very busy, so we do have a few that were unable to come, but I will still say their names and we will congratulate them as well as being a part of this. So what I'll do is read your names, and when I say your name, if you'll come up, LaRue, if you'll go ahead and come up, LaRue is our event coordinator, she also was a huge part of organizing everything with the Junior Board of Directors, I'm sure all of our students are thankful for her, if you just want to set it right there, so you have somewhere to be. So when I say your name, just come up, and then if you'll, I'll just stay up here until the end and we'll take a group photo. All right, thank you, I also want to say thank you to mayor and council for allowing me each year to present these students with a certificate and pin, recognizing their contribution and devotion to this Board of Directors. This came as part of just trying to get the local students involved in our community. So these bright high school students had an opportunity to engage with students from other schools, because we have Baldwin High School, John Millage Academy, and GMC Prep School, as well as learn about the local business owners downtown and about their hometown downtown. So obviously, you know, that's important to me as the Main Street Director. So this group of young people are very deserving, and I'm thankful for their volunteer work and thrilled to offer them this pen and certificate in recognition as their part. So as I call your name, if you'll come up and accept this, from Baldwin High School, we have Kingston Jenkins, come on up, Kingston.[611.66][611.66](applause) From GMC, so Kingston was the only one from Baldwin High School. GMC Prep School, we have Savannah Peavy.[633.82][633.82](applause) John V. Patel.[642.16][642.16](applause) Jonas Krager.[647.04][647.04](applause) And Kalia Wright.[651.16][651.16](applause) Come on up, Kalia. And these are representatives from GMC Prep. And then next, from John Millage Academy, we have Connor Hudgens.[663.00][663.00](applause) Maddie Ling.[667.13][667.13](applause) I think these are a few that weren't able to make it, we've got Emma Giles. Jacob Cantrell, they're not here, so I guess it's okay if you don't clap.[680.01][680.01](laughter)
Is that okay? Sorry, don't laugh at me.[684.13][684.13](laughter)
Carly Skinner is here, yeah, don't tell them.[688.23][688.23](laughter) Emma Renfro, she's not here, and Sarah Campbell. So if you'll just congratulate all these wonderful Junior Board of Directors, they're going into their senior year, and we're very happy that they came and participated in our Junior Board of Directors.
Yay.[708.13][708.13](applause)
Get a solid, do we need to get closer? Probably closer. All right, come on in. Don't get in the back. (laughter) Yeah, come on in. (laughter) Go that way. Thank you. All right, you all have all received a copy of the April 22nd, 2025 council meeting minutes.
Are there any corrections or amendments that need to be made? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the April 22nd, 2025 council meeting minutes?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The motion carries and the minutes are approved. At this time, I am going to shift, oh, we've done that.[801.51][801.51](laughter) We've done that part of it, let's keep it moving. Some of the mayor's comments tonight, I don't think we have any students, because I believe they're gone home.
They're gone home.[819.23][819.23](laughter)
Enjoy a little break, anyway.
You can park anywhere you like.[824.01][824.01](laughter)
Yeah, I noticed that when I was coming down Montgomery, I'm like, I might run anybody over. I think Mr. Griffin, I spoke with, what's his name, at the middle daughter reading committee, Laura and Brent this afternoon, and they told me you all had talked, and we were talking about the mapping and changing over, and she said you had the discussion will have everything out by May, so I'm not going to hash it out since y'all talked about it. I think that's all I was going to bring out tonight, I wanted to talk about the mapping, but Mr. Griffin has that under control and is going to have that out by next month, the next meeting. I don't have anything else I'm going to bring up tonight, so I'm going to move on down to the report and recognize Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mayor. You had at your seat at the dais a brown envelope today that had the draft budget worksheets in it, everybody but Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Reynolds gets his electronically. But it is a draft that is created by the request, we put all the requests on there, that's the way we start the draft, and then we work through those requests that are increases. When you look at your spreadsheet, you'll notice that we show the difference between this year's budget and the proposed budget based on requests, and everywhere there's an increase, you'll see that that cell is highlighted in green. So we will jump on those hot and heavy, beginning at 5:30 next week, and also start talking about how things look in terms of staff compensation. And we have two work sessions that if we really put our nose to the grindstone, I think we can get a budget before we go to GMA. Since the last meeting in June, we canceled for GMA, so we'll need to pass that the first meeting in June, or have a called meeting when we get back from GMA. But I think we can do it, the information that I'll share with you next week, I think will help us make pretty short work of those operating fund increases, and we can then concentrate on salaries, that's typically what takes us the longest part of the budget anyway, is working through the compensation piece. But I think we can easily have that done. So take a look at the spreadsheets, if you have specific questions that you want to ask me before next Tuesday, shoot me an email on those, and I'll turn the answers back around to you pretty quickly, and then share those answers with everybody else at the meeting next week. Also in your packet this evening, you have a copy of the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Compliance Report for 2025. State and local fiscal recovery funds is what you commonly hear me refer to as ARPA, and we have had to submit a compliance report by the end of April every year since we started expending these funds, so we had one in 2023, 2024, and then for 2025. If you'll notice, next to the last page in that report, there's information that reminds you of the actual total funds that we received, and the fact that we took the general revenue replacement exemption on those, even though that's the case, we still report out the projects that were funded with that, and that's what this P&amp;E report and compliance report is all about. The thing that's different about this report than in previous years was we had to have all of the ARPA money obligated by December 31st, 2024, and this is the report that showed that those obligations had been met. So if you look at the very back page, you will see that the total obligations is the exact same amount as the total funds that we received. So we met that deadline, we met that requirement, you can see of the funds that we received and they've obligated, we've spent almost 50% on those, we've still got some big-ticket items out there with storm water, and some of the things that you all passed in the only meeting we had in December, working on the PD Foundation, doing some storm water work at the police department, paving North Jefferson Street from the bridge to log cabin, those kinds of things, those expenditures were not completed before the deadline for this report, so those will be in the next report. We have until December 31st of 2026 to expend 100% of these funds, and I can assure you that will be no problem. And come our 2027 report, we will be showing that all of those funds have been expended. But we did get that in on time, and I just wanted you to know that, I wanted you to see the projects that it funded. And if you have any questions about any of those, please don't hesitate to contact me and ask me. Also, take note of the flyer about the GMA insurance rep that will be here on Friday, if you'd like to come and just talk to the rep, or just come and see some of our employees that are here, you're welcome to do that, you'll see that she'll be here in one-hour increments from 9:00 to 4:00. This is something that they started doing last year, and it's been extremely helpful for our employees, and I would encourage you to come if you have questions about the insurance that we provide our staff. Let me just highlight one piece of the information that was in my bi-weekly report to you for this meeting, and that's dealing with the need to make some appointments to the Planning and Zoning Board. You are reappointing Colonel John Alton tonight, he agreed to be reappointed, Mr. Herman Driscoll has asked not to be reappointed, so we will need to make an appointment for District 1. We still have, at this time, the need to name the permanent chair, and if that's going to be Mr. Hill, then a replacement for District 4, and
Three.
I'm sorry, three. And I was looking at three and had four right here, and it came out of my mouth. And then we'll need to make, we need to make a new appointment for District 5 to replace Kimberly Simmons. Ms. Simmons has not been attending the meeting and has not been contacting us back, so we need to have a replacement appointee for her. These appointments need to be made fairly quickly, I think already twice this calendar year, Mr. Jordan, we've had meetings where we did not have a quorum, and that was with Mr. Driscoll continuing to serve. And so if you all would get us some names, we'll be happy to make contact with them and let them know what's involved in them serving, but if we could, we need to get those appointments made fairly quickly, so we don't have
We have a PNC meeting, I think it's June the 5th.
Mr. Driscoll is going to attend that one, I believe, he is, yes, but he's just asked not to be reappointed after that June meeting, so.
Are they all on the same timeline as far as reappointment?
Uh, no, no, they stagger, they stagger, so.
I thought Ms. Simmons had resigned last year.
We have not gotten a resignation from her, not email, verbal, or anything, she just has not been coming to the meetings and has not been contacting the PNC office back, so.
Ms. Map, did you mention Ms. Simmons last year, about her position? I'm hearing that, of course.
And also, while not as urgent, we still have someone filling a position on the zoning Board of Zoning Appeals who would like to not be there anymore, so if you have someone that you'd like to recommend for that, I'm sure Mr. Wood would be happy to turn his seat over to that person. So if you could just let us know some names and some contact information, like I said, we'll be happy to contact these folks for you if you'd like for us to, and let them know what is involved. Mayor, unless there are questions, that's all I have.
Thank you. Little did you know, I had to report too, when you said that offer, and I'm trusting you, I said, yep, Mr. Griffin got it either.[1413.83][1413.83](laughter) So thank you on that one. All right, so.
We've done some good work with that money, we've been good stewards of that money, and
Very much. So, all right, so we do not have any old business for tonight, so we will now consider the new business, which is a part of the agenda, and I will ask the clerk to read Resolution 2504-12 by caption.
Resolution R-2504-12 to authorize a lease and a maintenance agreement with Rico USA Incorporated for a copier to be shared in the planning and zoning, inspections, human resources, and engineering departments.
All right, you all have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2504-14 by caption.
Resolution R-2504-14, a resolution to authorize a storm-water drainage easement across portions of property owned by Geo Chapman, located at 117 South Cambridge Drive.
You have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
All right, the resolution is adopted as such. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2504-13 by caption.
Resolution R-2504-13, a resolution to authorize a storm-water drainage easement across portions of property owned by Geo Chapman, located at 117 South Cambridge Drive.
You have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2504-14 by caption.
Resolution R-2504-14, a resolution to authorize a storm-water drainage easement across portions of property owned by Thomas Brown and Constance Brown, located at 119 South Cambridge Drive.
All right, you have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The resolution is approved?
Yes.[1655.03][1655.03](laughter) Been working on that for about, what, 30, 40 years now?
That was a long time coming, wasn't it, Mr. Chambers?
Yeah.[1659.03][1659.03](laughter) Good Lord, excuse me.
We have two alcohol applications that we need to approve this evening, and I will ask the clerk to present the first one.
Application by Sweetie Patel, on behalf of Damaya 19 LLC, the corner store located at 101 South Wayne Street, for beer retail package to go.
All right, you have heard the application, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
No.
Okay. All right, do me a favor, okay, well, the alcohol license is approved. I will ask the clerk to present the second alcohol license for approval.
Application by Krishna Devi, on behalf of Harry Lotto Mart LLC, located at 1210 South Wayne Street, for beer and wine retail package to go.
All right, you have heard the application, is there a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Is there any discussion? Ask clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Application is approved. The final item on the agenda is to make two reappointments tonight, I am nominating Colonel John Alton for reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, is there a motion for this nomination?
So move.
Is there any discussion? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Walden?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
This motion, nomination is confirmed. Secondly, I'm nominating Brian Milner for reappointment to the Allied Arts Board, is there a motion to confirm this nomination?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Mrs. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
All right, this nomination is confirmed. Counselor, is there any need for closed session tonight?
No ma'am, not tonight.
This concludes the items on the agenda, does anyone on council have any questions or comments?
I do, I'm questioning the April 15th and May 6th minutes that we have here.
Those are work session minutes, and they are, they are just for your information, so...
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're not missing anything.
Got a comment.
Mm-hmm.
Had the pleasure of meeting a young lady at a restaurant, she was working as a bartender. My daughter, who talks even more than me, struck up conversation, and I think she had met her before, and, long story short, she moved here during her high school years from Florida, she attended Georgia College and State University and got a degree, and she has not been able to find the job that she wants to go along with her degree, but she wants badly to stay in Milledgeville. And that was probably one of the most refreshing things that I have heard in quite some time, is that there was a graduate from Georgia College and State University that wanted badly to stay in Milledgeville, to the point that she was willing to do other jobs to make ends meet so that she could be here. Real excited to hear that, and I hope that's something that we continue to hear as time goes on. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other?
Mayor, I'd just like to, I forgot about something in my report, I'd just like for you to note on my biweekly report, that the retirement that I listed there this week is Ronnie Falk. I believe Ronnie may be our longest-serving employee from the city of Milledgeville, and so he is, he's finally hanging up his bunker pants after 42 and a half years, 43 and a half years, so if you all see Ronnie, please congratulate him, he'll, he'll be here when we give out our service awards at the end of the year in order to get his retirement gift, but Ronnie's been at the fire department for a long time, so...
Yep.
Anything else?
I think Mr. James Brandon still holds the record.
I don't know, Ronnie got one year on him, though.
Who'd ya?
Ronnie has one year, I think James Brandon was 42.
Well, I thought, I thought James had 50 years.
Oh, I have 42.
Maybe they just felt like he'd been here 50 years.
Yeah, actually, why?
He was here a long time, I know that. No, he just, he snapped.
All right, guys, so if it's nothing else, I've got another obligation, got to get to GMC, is there a motion to adjourn? So move.
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Mrs. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.